Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council's advanced briefing session for April 25th, briefing the May 2nd meeting. Ms. Pfister, could you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
And the "here's" have it, just barely by one. Mr. Perkins, if you would like to take us through the May 2nd's advanced agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. This is the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, May 2nd. On the consent agenda, item number one is a purchase of a lightly-used 2021 Western Star dump truck from Gordon Trucks for the Water Department. And here to brief on that is Rick Giddings. Mr. Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President and City Council members. Fleet Services would like to purchase a very lightly-used 2021 Western Star dump truck from Gordon Trucks for the Water Department for a total of $249,989 including tax. Although we don't normally purchase used vehicles, this one is fairly used and in the current state of the vehicle market. This provides the city with an excellent opportunity to replace a vehicle that has reached the end of its economic life at its significant savings over new and without the estimated two-year wait time for purchasing new. This is within the Water Department's current budget.
Quick question for you. What's the cost differential between a new one and this used one?
I can't give you specifics, but my estimate is about $40,000 to $50,000.
The difference? Okay.
And could we...
The difference, yeah, cheaper.
Could we find a new one?
We can order a new one, but we have to wait for a chassis to become available or a built spot at a factory. And from the time, from now, the estimate is about two years to order, from the time we order it to get one.
All right. Thank you. That's us getting that.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Item number two on the consent agenda is a contract amendment with Control Solutions Northwest for care and maintenance of the HVAC systems at various fire departments throughout the city. Here to brief is Fire Chief Jay Atwood. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council, Council President. We are coming before you to ask for a contract amendment for an existing contract that we have with Control Solutions Northwest. It was a three-year contract with an allowance of $82,545 total for the three-year contract. We're asking for an additional, an amendment to add an additional $100,000 to that contract due to some unanticipated high-cost repairs that we've already had to undertake at the combined communications building, fire training center, and a couple of the other buildings out at that fire training campus.
Thank you, Chief. Item three, drinking water state revolving fund agreement with the Washington State Department of Health. Items 3A, Spokane International Airport Transmission Line. Item 3B, Thorpe Reservoir. Presenting Mark Pappich.
Thank you. Good afternoon. These two loans are the two loans that Marlene had referenced in her briefing this afternoon. One of them is for the SIA pipe crossing under I-90. The loan amount on that one is $5,050,000. The other is an additional Thorpe reservoir. Loan amount on that is $7,827,500. These are both 20-year terms at 1.75%. Any questions?
So, does this get us ahead of the Buy American issues that we've been talking about?
Correct. So, this will get us in before that May 14th window. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pappich. Item four, master contracts for portable restrooms and wash stations. Rental services support ongoing operations in the city's multiple departments. Item 4A is with American Onsite Services. Item 4B is with Toray Refuge and Recycling. The presenter is Connie Wall.
If she's not there, I think it's pretty self-explanatory that we need porta-potties on various things, our construction or maintenance around the city, that's when it's not available to our employees.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. Items five and six are standard agenda items for advanced briefing and council agenda. Item five is reported to the mayor on pending claims and payments of previous obligations with Parks and Library. Item six is a city council meeting minutes. Both items will have the information completed and filled in for vote and approval and consideration on Monday, May 9. Moving now to the legislative agenda, specifically special budget ordinances. The first ordinance up for briefing is on the wastewater fund, and this action arises from the need to purchase up to six all-electric vehicles to be used by the Water Department. And the presenter is Mr. Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, Council. The Water Department is requesting a special budget ordinance to pull $250,000 out of our unappropriated reserves. It's for the purchase of six electric F-150s that were in the budget last year, and we had ordered them. But then Ford canceled that at the end of December because those funds were canceled, the order was canceled, the funds were no longer encumbered, and we did not have those available in this year's budget then. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. The next special budget ordinances, again, from the, this one's from the general fund. This action arises from the need to provide budget authority for public defender contractual service needs. And the presenter is Paul Injosie. Mr. Injosie.
Thank you, Johnny. Good afternoon, Council President and City Council members. On PDF page 162 of your packet is a special budget ordinance to provide budget authority to the Public Defender's Office for a site support payment with the Spokane County United Way. Back in July 2020, the city signed an MOU with the Spokane County United Way to recruit and assign one AmeriCorps Vista member to the city's Public Defender's Office. Since that MOU assigned the annual amount the city would pay to the Spokane County United Way has increased from $5,000 to $6,250, and this SBO will provide that increased budget authority. Any questions on this one?
I was just going to add, for anyone watching, this gives us essentially a social worker navigator for community court, and so it's a pretty good deal. We're just paying a small amount of money, and they're working full-time for us.
Thank you, Mr. Injosie. The next special budget ordinance has a number of components dealing with the real estate excise tax fund, communication building maintenance operations fund, emergency medical services fund, the management information services fund, and the general fund. And this action arises from the need to transfer to these funds and align the budget authority for projects included in the 2022-2027 capital improvement program. Again, the presenter is Paul Injosie.
Thank you again, Mr. Perkins. This SBO begins on PDF page 166 of your packet. It appropriates approximately $2.4 million in real estate excise tax funds for 12 projects included in the 2022-2027 capital improvement program. The 22-27 CIP included around $3.6 million in projects to be funded from REIT dollars. Approximately $1.2 million of that total was included in the adopted budget, but the balance is inadvertently not appropriated in the final bill. So, we're requesting an SBO to appropriate the $2.4 million for the projects already approved in the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Injosie. Next special budget ordinance is also coming from the general fund, and this action arises from the need to create a deputy treasurer position. Our presenter is our chief financial officer, Tanya Wallace.
Thank you, and good afternoon, City Council members. On page 173 of your packet is a request for a deputy treasurer position that would be reclassified from the treasury manager position. This reclassification really is an expanded scope of that position to include a lot of debt ratios, complex calculations, investment work, and other debt financing. And with that broader scope, the minimum qualifications are also enhanced to match that added responsibility. A funding impact is not anticipated, certainly not for this year. So, with that, Council, I do request your approval of that request. Any questions?
Tanya, thank you. I think I've asked, what will be the fiscal impact of next year? We know what salary savings, it'll be minimal this year, but how will that really affect the budget going forward for 2023? So, the total cost of this position?
That is a great question, and it's going to be fully dependent on what the next incumbent comes in at, but at this point in time, I do not anticipate an impact in 2023 since our prior incumbent was paid at the very highest step of that position. The next incumbent coming in, even at a $16,000 pay scale increase, would not be coming in at that top step. They would be coming in at the lower portion of that rate. So, it could be several years before we experienced that $16,000 difference between the salary grades.
And, Clarice, not a new position, just a reclassification?
Correct.
Thank you, Madam CFO. Next item under special budget ordinance relates to the American Rescue Plan Fund. This action arises from the need to provide additional appropriation authority for funding childcare assistance. And the presenter is the Council Budget Officer, Matt Boston.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Perkins. So, this need came from discussions within the committee, the subcommittee that was put together between the administration and the council. Two rounds of community outreach was conducted, and just as a need for additional funding was concluded. So, raising the initial $1 million in ARPA funding to $3 million in funding. Any questions?
Matt, when will we see the RFP and kind of have an understanding of how these dollars are going to be spent?
Yeah, so, the committee is working right now to get that out the door. I believe there is a draft coming out right now. The next step, I believe, is to have it in front of a city council study session, which I think is slated to happen this Thursday, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I can add on to that. So, it's scheduled for study session Thursday to talk about it. We're waiting on the administration, and Tanya last week said, hopefully, we'll be pleasantly surprised that they'd have it this week for that. But we'll at least have the guiding principles for Thursday.
Okay.
And I just want to say, the increase really came out of our community engagement. We've talked with a number of childcare providers, and as they explained the need, how significant it is, we were truly convinced that we need to increase that amount. If that amount is not utilized, then it will roll back into the ARP funds and can be redistributed, deployed somewhere else.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Boston. The next special budget ordinances covers a number of funds: the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, the Police Property Acquisition Fund, the Fire Property Acquisition Fund, the Fleet Replacement Fund, and the Fleet Services Fund. This action arises from the need to purchase a commissioned fire or police vehicles, purchase and installation of electric charging infrastructure, and a procurement of a study. Again, the presenter is the Council's Budget Officer, Matt Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. So, this, again, is going to be funded through ARPA. This is for the much-needed capital purchases of both police and fire apparatus while maintaining the route to go towards a fully electric fleet. There is $2.374 million being allocated to police and fire for 25 K8 electric hybrid models, five Ford Mach-Es, three Ford Lightnings, and two Chevrolet diesel Tahos, netting out to $2.374 million, as well as $3.707 million for fire pumper truck apparatus, as well as the equipping of those rigs. There's $90,000 that is going to be allocated for the procurement and installation of electric charging infrastructure, again, maintaining that route to go toward a fully electric fleet, and then $100,000 on a study of the overall fleet usage at the moment. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Boston. Under resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have six resolutions and one final ordinance to read. Our first resolution is establishing a year-long 20 mile-hour speed limits on streets adjacent to certain parks. And I believe our presenter is Council President Pro Tem Kinnear.
Thank you. And I am going to ask that we, because I still have not had a meeting with Marlene Feis, I'm going to ask that we defer this until May 23rd.
Is the motion to defer to May 23rd? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, it's deferred.
Thank you.
And I've also requested that Councilmember Kinnear perhaps integrate our new authority to establish cameras near parks, since a lot of the people are saying, okay, let's enforce those.
All right. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Next resolution, requesting that the city of Spokane take advantage of state funding opportunities related to housing and homelessness. Again, our presenter is Council President Pro Tem Kinnear.
And this is pretty much a common sense resolution that we are asking the administration to get ready to accept Commerce funds so that we are ready to build housing when it's, and that means that we have to be ready with a 30% match as well. So, it's fairly boilerplate. Done this before, but we weren't quite on top of it the way we should have been, so hoping that we will be this time, ready to get those funds up and get things rolling.
And I will say, the first round, we were not quite prepared to partner with Commerce and did not have other providers interested, but the understanding and interest is there now, so we are coming out, staying again for this round. Council's ready to step up to the plate and provide that percentage down to go forward towards housing. I'd rather pay 30% than 100%, and so that's why I'm in support of this.
And remember, too, this, they are also covering the operating costs as well.
And the operating costs, which was a barrier last time.
All right. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. The next resolution is adapting the City of Spokane Transit Oriented Development Framework Study, and our presenter is Colin Quinnhurst.
My name is Colin Quinnhurst with Planning Services, and I'm here to talk about the Transit Oriented Development Framework Study. So, I'm here with a resolution to recognize the work that's gone into this over the past year, and the resolution will recognize the community process that went into this plan, as well as the guiding principles that came out of it, the strategies that are recommended for multimodal access improvements, as well as the strategies around regulations to support dense mixed-use housing around high-frequency transit. So, again, the purpose of this study was to recommend a Spokane-specific process and principles and strategies to support transit-oriented development in support of the city line, our first bus rapid transit line, and the $92 million investment that went into that. And we specifically chose the Logan Gonzaga Campus area and Chief Gary Park neighborhood for this study, as we felt like it could provide us with some very relevant recommendations for how to make the most of the BRT line. As far as public process went, over the past year, we've done a number of strategies as far as informing the community. We had kind of your standard project website, handouts, presentations to neighborhood councils. As far as involving the neighborhood, we had two workshops where we had online interactive workshops with neighborhoods and stakeholders, and we went to the neighborhood council meetings and had discussions with them. We also had an online interactive story map where people could insert their comments. And then, as far as collaborating, we had four steering committee meetings and four technical committee meetings throughout the year, where a number of stakeholders in the community, neighborhood organizations, residents could come and participate in our decisions and our recommendations. We've been to a number of city council sessions. This is the fourth now, so the third was most recently on March 14th at the Urban Experience So, as far as next steps go, after recognizing this study, the next step is an implementation project. So, it's the South Logan Transit Oriented Development Implementation Project that's been funded by the Department of Commerce, and that's already come forward to you to get started. There are two related and similar projects on North Monroe and Division Street, and the final report for this study is online now and available for review. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Next, we have two resolutions dealing with various appointments. The first is the appointment of Nick Antush as public defender. The second is the appointment of Lauren Searle as the Water and Hydro Services Director, and our presenter as our Human Resources Director, Chris Smith.
Good afternoon, City Council. As briefed in last week's Finance and Administration Committee meeting, the following two mayoral appointees, Lauren Searle and Nick Antush, are being presented for confirmation to the positions of Director of Water and Hydroelectric Services and Public Defender, respectively. Both are internal candidates, with each having approximately 27 years' service with the city of Spokane. The public defender applicant was selected from a candidate pool of 10 candidates. The director of Water and Hydroelectric Services applicant was selected from a candidate pool of eight applicants. Both announcements were open approximately five weeks. Pending your questions?
Chris, I have no issues with the appointment of the prosecutor. As I asked before, such an important position that serves a role in the community, we just wish, well, I and some community members wished there had been an opportunity to play a role in the interview process, because this person will be impacting our citizens' lives. So, again, no issues with Mr. Antush, but some of these positions, we're really going to be requesting some type of community engagement support, so this, these people just don't come for the community out of nowhere, and all of a sudden, they're serving in critical positions in our city.
Understood. I appreciate that feedback. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Resolution addressing increasing overtime costs within the Spokane Fire Department. The presenter is Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. So, this was briefed at Public Safety earlier this month. Essentially, this resolution, it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. It is asking the administration to look at some various creative options that do not reduce our fire service in order to get overtime under control, and one of those is to bring back those 25 firefighters, or at least find a path to bring back those 25 firefighters.
Question. Do you know, and I think this is for you, we authorized a overtime study. Can you tell us if, so is this part of that or not? Should it be?
I believe this is a separate action and request from the two studies that are underway right now. One is the general overtime study that you, this council requested on police and fire. The second is a forensic review that's also underway as it relates to specifically sick time and leave time relating to the Fire Department.
But will one of those cover what Councilmember Cathcart is discussing or not?
I will need to defer to Chief Financial Officer and ask her, I'm not sure if she's still with us, and get her guidance and report back, Council President Pro Tem. Oh, there she is. Tanya.
Hi, Councilmembers. I do not believe that the outset of that study or the forensic audit is going to specifically address what Councilmember Cathcart is discussing on bringing back the firefighters that were laid off due to vaccination mandates.
Thank you.
I would just add, Chief Schaefer, in one of his updates, said that we were short about 38 staff members, and that most of our overtime issues were related to being understaffed. So, if we could very quickly bring back well-experienced firefighters, I think that would start to cut down on the overtime costs. And right now, from what we heard the other day from our Chief Financial Officer, we're looking at $7 million in cost projected at the end of this year. And so, if we wait till the overtime studies come back, which we should look at what those recommendations are 100%, but if we wait, we're just going to be further down the road and more behind the eight ball.
So, just not to push back too much, Chief Schaefer also said that he had, I think, 40 in academy right now, had over 100 applicants. So, I guess all of a sudden, our Fire Department is very popular.
If I could clarify that, Council President Pro Tem, we have 19 cadets currently in the academy with the plan to do two additional academies simultaneously on the same tracks, which would hopefully earn us and gain us 40 additional firefighters by years. And so, as Councilmember Cathcart has pointed out, to address that overtime issue with staffing at the end of the year, we believe we will have the staffing to get that under a manageable control that is within the budget that you approve on an annual basis.
Great, thank you.
It is cheaper to bring back firefighters than to train brand-new ones, though, correct?
I will defer to my Chief Financial Officer, Councilmember Bingle, to answer that question. Tanya.
And I will do my best. Yes, in theory, it would be less expensive. It'll cost about $550,000 for a recruit academy that holds about 20 positions.
Councilmember Cathcart, I understand the path forward, but a lot of this is from the state mandate that is in the civil service process, so I don't know if our HR, she's not long with us, but that's kind of an HR issue. So, I know we're expressing we want to go a path forward. So I know we're expressing we want to go a path forward, and I understand the resolution, but at the end, I don't know how we're going to be able to impact that as individual council. So if you may know more.
I would just say, I mean, other jurisdictions, when this was being implemented last year, they figured out ways to mitigate and to keep their personnel, and so I think we can follow their lead and do something similar. It really just comes down to providing tests and PPE and possibly some mitigation around where they sleep, but that's really all we have to do.
Do we know how many of those past firefighters want to come back?
I've heard there's potentially 13.
13 is the number I've heard, too. Yep.
If I can ask, I'm not sure if the city attorney is on the line with us, but I know there are some other considerations as it relates to that topic on the legal side, and I don't want to have a penalty flag thrown on me by the city attorney, but I'm not sure if he's still on or not, if he could.
I am.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Perkins, I don't think this is the forum for us to talk about that, because there are significant legal and financial ramifications to what is being proposed here, and we're in the process of forming a letter that we will be sending to the city council, but this really fits under the attorney-client rubric, and we will be providing additional advice to the council in addition to what we've already provided. But the issue, to be fair and summary, is not as simple as being presented in the commentary that we've had. So I think we need to provide a more detailed response to the council, and we're in the process of working on that.
Just one last thing, not to rebut, I'm not an attorney, I'll leave that to our city attorney, but I did write this specifically as saying identifying a path forward, because there could be some legal issues that have to be worked out, and so the goal is, let's find a path forward to bring those individuals back.
So, city attorney, Orange Beach, so does this resolution is in conflict with what your legal advice to council is, or could it be deferred until we have more information from the city attorney's office?
Well, I think that, first of all, the resolution is providing guidance to what the council, if it was approved, what the council's asking us to look at doing, and at the end of the day, we may not be able to find a path forward, but certainly, we have looked at a number of issues, both back in the fall, when we were going through the process dealing with both the requests for exemptions, as well as requests for accommodations, and there was a very detailed analysis done on each application at that point, and more has occurred since then. So we will be looking at all that. I think the council is asking a fair question, but at the end of the day, I would be less than honest if I told you there was a clear path forward. I'm not sure that there is, but it certainly is worth looking at, and we certainly can provide a response to the council about why we think it is either possible or possibly not the best of ideas, and we are working on that.
So then, Councilmember Cath, Councilmember, city attorney, Orange Beach, do you have a timeline for that? I don't want to shoot you down, Councilmember Cathcart, if he has a window of time that he can provide this information to us.
You know, I'm hoping to get it to the council later this week, but it may be next week, because there are other people that need to look at it besides me.
Could I make a motion to defer for two weeks? Would you be okay with that?
Till which date?
Somebody has a calendar, two weeks. Somebody tell me what two weeks is.
May 9th?
I believe that might be May 9th.
May 9th.
Councilmember.
There's a motion to defer to May 9th.
I'm amenable. That was my co-sponsor feel.
Is there a second? Are you a second?
Second.
Or who?
My second.
It was your motion.
It was my motion. First, second, third, and fourth.
Okay. Is there a second?
There was a second.
I was wondering if you two wanted a second at first.
Yeah.
We want to keep it in play. I'm trying to keep it in play.
I got you. Yeah.
Okay. Second from Councilmember Bingo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I wasn't seconding, I was just agreeing to the.
Being amenable. Yes. I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding deferring this resolution until May 9th? Hearing seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
And an aye.
And any abstentions? All right, it's deferred till May 9th.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart and Councilmember Wilkerson. The final reading ordinance in this section relating to traffic control device visibility and vegetation control along roadways in the city, and our presenter this afternoon is Inga Note.
So I don't really have anything new, other than I did draw up a couple of slides that hopefully clarify what we're trying to do, but this was deferred till next week, and I think it's just a chance for more discussion with staff.
I lost track of exactly what we were trying to clarify before the next vote, but it's something to do with, would there be help for property owners who needed?
Yeah, with the licensed arborist being a cost burden for certain families. I had had a conversation with Garrett Jones about potentially, because I appreciate what you're doing here, once we got some clarity, of instead of making it to where we have a fund that's available for people who need to have a licensed arborist hired, if we could just increase the diameter of the branch to where you would be required to call a licensed arborist. Has he spoken with you on that?
Yeah, I think the, hi, Council President, councilmembers, Katie Kosenki with Urban Forestry. So we did discuss that in general. We didn't think that we would be in support of that change, just because equipping, you know, abutting property owners to prune trees that are close to the street, a lot of times at intersections, up on ladders, you know, things around where you want to do it properly to be sure that it doesn't make it worse, and then you have kind of a flush of new growth in front of signs, we determined was probably one of the most important places for them to be done correctly, again, without creating a continual issue. As staff, we did mainly, you know, talk about our ability to just go ahead and assist with more locations as they arise, and maybe figure out with the streets department, if we were going to hire a tree service to do it, how to pay for that, or for us to do it in staff. As we have been doing in the past, we have been doing quite a few locations, and we can continue to do so. However, at this time, our leadership was hesitant to write into the ordinance the city's obligation to take care of every single one of those issues. Again, mainly because we're park-funded, and, you know, we have limited staff, and this is really, you know, out of the park realm. Again, we kind of saw this as two separate issues. We would love to be able to look into assisting abutting property owners, making our trees safer, reducing the number of, you know, burden for care. I will tell you that, you know, we just send out, I went and counted back, we only send out about two to six per year of these notices, and we can look at our capacity every time we look at, when we're about to send one, and say, gee, can we just go ahead and take care of this? I would say that most of the time, they do fall into the minor pruning category, because they're small trees before they do get up and over, so we can commit to assisting, but again, our leadership was hesitant to including that into the ordinance, especially without park board's support. The tree and signs item that is being brought forth actually loosens standards, so there may be less notices being discussed about being sent out, because it really is just kind of a tool in the toolbox for urban forestry, streets, engineering to all be on the same page. Right now, the federal standards is what the ordinance refers to, and so when the street department is reviewing.
So that's where the two inches came from, is federal standards in the branch diameter?
No, that is another section of the Urban Forestry Ordinance. I apologize, I'm going on and answering your question.
You're doing great.
And more.
You're doing great, yeah.
But, you know, when streets are reviewing the plans, they're saying, nope, none of these trees can be planted, and even engineering and integrated capital management is saying, that sign doesn't need to be visible, it's a non-critical sign, it's a no-parking sign, it doesn't need to be viewed from an astronomical, you know, ways back. So this actually loosens those standards a bit, but we definitely are open to, you know, collaborating and, you know, finding solutions that will benefit the citizens and our urban forests in regards to street trees.
So I know this, some folks might seem kind of silly, but I just, I get very concerned because those two to six instances could be two to six low-income families, and they're struggling, and now we're telling them they have to hire this arborist. So, but my question is, if it's only two to six, is that really such a stretch that you guys can't accommodate that? And if you can, why can't we just put something into code if it's only two to six?
I'll have to, again, kind of defer to Garrett Jones and, you know, the park board, because I can't obligate us to that in the ordinance as much as I would want to help. There are a lot of other notices that go about, out about dead trees and all sorts of things that one day we would love to be able to assist with that are much more of a burden, in my opinion.
And, but those are, I guess I see them as a little different, because you're talking about a really big project with a whole tree that you have to remove, and of course, it makes a lot of sense, you're going to hire somebody most likely to come out, you know, if there's, you know, some sort of disease or whatever, that's a pretty big thing. If it's a branch, a branch, and it's three inches, and it's in front of a sign, and you have to hire a professional arborist to come out just to make one cut, basically, that's where I'm frustrated, and I don't want to see somebody penalized for this one branch that they could literally go out and cut in five seconds. You know, that's the kind of thing I want to avoid.
Yeah, and maybe we can collaborate with streets a little bit more, and maybe instead of obligating parks to do the work, maybe we could talk with streets, and where we could collaboratively try to figure that out, where we're not placing it on the abutting property owner, where we can, again, for just trees and signs, maybe just be able to take care of that.
Councilmember, can you?
So, we're talking about six of these a year, essentially, because we talked, Katie, and we're not talking about, you know, dozens and dozens of trees. As soon as you let people who are not tree people determine whether they should or should not cut, or how big a branch is, or where to cut the branch, do I cut here, do I get into the trunk and really get this branch? There are so many things that can happen, and again, you're in the right-of-way, you have the risk of getting into traffic if you're on a ladder, there are a whole nother set of risks. If you're under wires, then there's another issue. So I think we're making a lot out of this when we're only dealing with six, and you guys have taken care of it thus far, really. It hasn't been an issue before this.
I, again, guess the flipside argument could be made, which is what Councilwoman Cathcart was saying, which is, if it's only two to six, then why don't we just do it, as opposed to putting the?
That's what they're doing now, so.
I guess I'm confused then, why a homeowner would have to hire a licensed arborist if we're already taking care of it.
They don't want people, so what is happening now, Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, is you're going out and fixing, if it's a small issue, you're fixing what the issue is.
So if it's a critical safety sign, like a stop sign, at this time, that's when we're pulling the arborist from the park and getting that work taken care of. If it's parking enforcement just saying, hey, at this location downtown, there's the no parking sign, you know?
Right.
Parking sign that's obstructed. Again, usually, it is pretty minor pruning, and those are those additional notices that we send out to those two to six locations per year, asking them to do it.
Yeah, and it's usually the downtown businesses who already have property managers taking care of that sort of thing, so.
Councilwoman Shritten?
Again, I'll say, I've had no problem with, in my district, two or three instances where residents knew that they had to fix a tree issue. They've called me, and all it took for me was a call to parks and a call to streets, and streets went out and took care of the trees for us. So, I mean, I don't know how many calls we get, I had like maybe three in a year. It's nice to be able to know that, you know, we look at, they happened to be doing some street work in the street where this elderly man lived, and they were more than happy to go over and take care of his issue for him. So, I mean, we're not talking a whole lot of people, and it is kind of nice to know that constituents can call us, and let's see what we can do to help them, but I don't know if it's enough to regulate that, I don't know.
I'm just going to offer for the conversation, because maybe we can move on, is that this ordinance is not really the issue that we're debating, the ordinance is relaxing the standards so you don't have to cut as many trees if you're a property owner, but it brings up an important issue. And really, what I hear the debate back and forth is, do we put something in the ordinance that says homeowners can always get help from the city or not? And I would just suggest that perhaps another way to handle this would be in the budget, is that we just allocate some money every year in the budget for, you know, up to 20 arborists-provided services that you guys can allocate however you want, that should take care of it. But it might be more of a budget solution than an ordinance solution, as I'm just kind of imagining it.
Sure.
So I just throw that in there, but we could.
Just to close here, you've been shorthanded for years, you've been underfunded for years, so, not you personally, but urban forestry, so.
That's a good idea.
But you'd have to make sure that people fit the qualification of being
Right.
Under a certain
Yeah.
Income.
Financial income.
And we already do have a city-on-call arborist contract.
Okay. All right. We could just add to that.
Yeah, just add to it.
Yeah. Okay.
Ta-da.
We know this so thoroughly, I mean, you've gotten your wish, that you've gotten to educate us about arborist work in the city and all that you do, so thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, yeah.
First reading ordinances, the first ordinance, amending ordinance of vacated Dalton Avenue from Ash Place to Ash Street, Mr. Eldon Brown.
Thanks. Back in 1985, Dalton Avenue was vacated between Ash Place and Ash Street, and here in the area, crosshatched, and there's what we vacated, and we maintained an easement in there for wasting water power at the time. Now we have a property owner there that pretty much owns half of Dalton Avenue, you can kind of see half of it's crosshatched in blue, and then he owns the other parcel that's kind of in green. There is one lot today, and he's came to us to do a short plat. He can't really do that short plat unless we can release that easement that we have there that's in blue. So that's what we're here to do, is to release easements that's shown in blue, which is roughly three-quarters of that area that was vacated back in 85. That would allow him the ability to actually then put a second lot in there and put a house on that second parcel. So we've worked with the Vista, and they're okay with releasing everything shown in blue, they just want to retain that, the rest of that crosshatched area for some facilities that they do have there. So we're here to actually amend the ordinance from 85 to release what's shown in blue. Be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, first reading ordinance, it's an action relating to special events cost recovery fees, Carly Courtwright.
Thank you, sir. Hello, good afternoon, council. So this was briefed pretty extensively back at Urban Experience last week, or two weeks ago. I did make a couple modifications to what was presented then that I just want to call out. One of them was to, we put in that cost recovery structure of the flat fee for the legacy events, and then recommended 75% for all other events. It's been brought to my attention that Lylloc is planning to continue to do the holiday parade that they did last year in response to pretty good feedback from downtown that they want to continue doing that. We didn't really have a mechanism in there for any new parades that might be created, so I added in a 25% cost recovery for new parades, which would be consistent with what we were doing for the other parades, but just with a flat fee, which we can't assess at this time, because we don't know. The other change that was made in here, thanks to something that Terry, the city clerk, pointed out, we had some language change that we were making in regards to keeping it consistent with business practice. One of those changes advised by Mary Muramato was to include the appeals process, there is something already in the code for that, she just streamlined it and included it in this. this ordinance to make that easier. The problem is that that would need to also change a different part of the code that needed to be briefed before plan commission. In the interest of getting this moving along, and the fact that we already have an appeals process, we decided to pull that. And so we just left what it currently says in there, which is, go see this section of the code. So, it's not as nice, but I didn't want to delay this further, and so, those are the two changes in regards to anything else that I discussed two weeks ago.
Thank you, Carly.
All right, thank you.
Our final three ordinances, the first relating to design guidelines, second addresses standards for sidewalks, and the final one is regarding the design review process. Our presenter, Dean Gunderson.
Members of the council, my name is Dean Gunderson, I'm with the Planning Department, I'm the senior urban designer for the city. This is three ordinances that devolved out of a single project, single initiative. This particular design guidelines project, these are all the various public engagement sessions, these don't include the actual public surveys that we did and the exhaustive workshops with neighborhoods and the, and city council. We are here today at the advanced agenda briefing. The objectives for the project were, one, to craft new design guidelines for public projects and structures, skywalks and citywide, one, craft a new skywalk chapter under land use standards, and then, one, to provide some clarity to the DRB process. In order to improve the access or accessibility of the guidelines, we restructured the format of the existing set of guidelines, the most robustly used set of guidelines we have are, which are for the downtown, but we reformatted all three new design guidelines to be, to improve readability, to improve legibility, and to add lists of commonly-used urban design terms. The three design guidelines are, will be crafted and published into booklets that will be linked to the code, so that if a project is subject to those new guidelines, they'll actually have direct access to it, rather than having to call us up separately. So we have public projects and structures, skywalks, and citywide or base standards. The three new ordinances, one is 36, C36204, this is the one that actually adopts the new design guidelines and provides the links in the actual land use code. It also removes shoreline conditional use permits from design review, which was something we've been working on since 2016, and we actually removed the references to the design review from shoreline conditioning use permits last year. And we clarify which guidelines are used in what types of projects. The second ordinance, C36205, is the one that creates the new land use standards chapter for skywalks. These are all criteria that you currently find in the code, but it's very deep in Title 12, Chapter 2, Article 3. So we pulled all of those design criterias and moved them into the land use standards, and we clarified how one would go about asking for a design departure, which is not entirely clear right now. And then the final ordinance, which is C36206, is the one that provides clarity to the design review process. We say, which design standards are eligible for design departures? It was, we also added that Skywalk application requirements refer to the design review recommendations, and location and design for public wayfinding signage, and it deletes references to design review committee findings occurring at a planned unit development preliminary stat, preliminary plat stage of a review. For some reason, the decision criteria for planned unit developments had design review occurring at the preliminary plat stage. That's when a property owner is just trying to determine whether they can subdivide the property, they haven't actually hired designers yet. So here we are, asking them for landscape plans and architectural plans, so we removed that section. And we clarified that a Skywalk's air rights use still must conform to the remaining sections that are found in Title 12, Chapter 2, Article 3, and that Skywalk development conforms to the standards found in the new chapter, which is 17C255. And that is it, stand for questions.
Councilmember Schrute.
Just a big thank you, I know how much work went into this for you and your team.
A big thank you to Taylor Berberick, who actually made the beautiful graphics and everything.
And always available to answer questions and to sit down and make sure that I get it. And the other thing is, I'm talking up those skywalks, excited about those, and if I have my way, we'll have skywalks all over the place. Be cool.
That was, that was one of the things that we wanted to do in the guidelines, was to create an aspirational section out of each guideline, that rather than just taking photographs of existing projects within the city, we wanted to have exemplary examples from wherever they are on the planet, and have those as aspirational elements, so that people could understand what the target was, what direction we want to move in as a city.
Well, a lot of work went into all of it, and it's very, very much appreciated, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dean, and that brings us to the end of the briefing on the May 2nd agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions?
Oops, aye.
Agenda is adopted, six to one.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to tonight's agenda, there's a couple requests to add items. So is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding items to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that had at least five votes, so the rules are suspended, and I'm looking at ordinance C36195. Can you just read the title, Terry?
Sure. Ordinance C36195, American Rescue Plan Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $750,000 funded from the city's direct allocation of the state and local fiscal recovery fund of the American Rescue Plan Act. A of the increased appropriation, $750,000 is provided to the city of Spokane Parks Recreation Division to replace funding lost due to COVID solely for the renovation of the Centennial Trail Don Cawdon Pedestrian Bridge. This action arises from the need to provide additional appropriation authority for the Centennial Trail renovations to the Don Cawdon Bridge due to increased construction costs.
Is there a motion to adopt this as a special budget ordinance for tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's added to our agenda. Then there is a request to add a resolution, and we'll get to a potential substitution in a moment, but first it would be to add the resolution 2022-0043. Is there a motion to add that resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, and any discussion about adding it to the agenda? And then we'll get to substitutions in a moment. All right, hearing, seeing none, all those in favor of adding 0043 to tonight's agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay, any abstentions? Okay, so it's added to the agenda, circulated yesterday, a new version. I see one Scrivener's error in the version, at the very top in the title, it says facility requirements, and based on the language of the version, it should say facility recommendations. So I'm looking for a motion to substitute the version, along with the substitute of the word recommendations for requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay, that's past six to one with a new version on that. And then, I circulated two potential substitutions on forfeiture ordinances. The first was for ordinance C36192. It is a proposed special budget ordinance to spend $89,960 of federal forfeiture funds, and my substitution modified it to make it clear that the office furniture portion would go to ergonomic desks and chairs at this point, and not the cubicles, because we're going to be considering a resolution to support a new facility that has cubicles in it already. So is there a motion to substitute this, the version that we circulated, again, Sunday afternoon?
So moved.
Second.
I'm just looking for clarity, because my understanding is, the chief has to sign off on anything forfeiture-related, is that, is that right? And I'd like to get some clarity if he's signed off on these changes.
I don't know if he has signed off on this change or not, I didn't get an email from him, I did forward it to him.
He's here, he's here.
Yep, I see him. Chief Mydl, did you have an opinion about devoting the office furniture to the stand-up desks and chairs at this time? Without prejudice to come back for the cubicles if we don't buy that new property?
Good, good afternoon, council members, I just had a look at my time to see if it was still morning or afternoon, it's been one of those days. You know, it's, the saying I think I heard before, you know, two in hand is worth one in the bush, and we, at this point, will take what we can get to get the detectives what they need. You know, we truly do request that we get the money for the cubicles, as well, as you heard from Major McNabb, they're held together by zip ties, and our detectives are working very hard, and they're working in an environment where they're really on top of each other. So my request would be using these federal forfeiture funds for the things that Major McNabb originally asked for. If the council does not want to go that direction, then at this point, we'll take what we can get.
Great, and stay near the front row here, because you'll probably be up in another minute. But yeah, just to clarify, Major McNabb told us that they always need more stand-up desks, so this was trying to honor that, but the new building, if we would get it where the gardener detectives would go, has really good cubicles. So it would just free up money then to do other things that the department might want to do.
So just to be clear, if we didn't get the building that we're thinking about, we, you could come back, chief, for an ask with cubicles.
But how long would that take? I mean, how long would they be sitting in these cubicles that aren't working until we get that building work? Do we know how long?
Well, we'll either get it soon, or we won't get it at all, so, because it's, there's competing bids for it.
And I remember Major McNabb, I asked him pretty directly if we bought those cubicles in the same way if we bought the desks, would you be able to use these in another area if we purchased this new building? And he said absolutely. And so, along the same line of logic, we could use those cubicles in another building the same as we could use new, those new ergonomic desks. And I imagine that the Primera Building also has, you know, nice cubicles as well as nice desks, and so...
Well, they don't have stand-up desks, but the, I don't think Major McNabb had been to the Primera Building to see if the cubicles would be good enough for his thing. I could be wrong about that, but I don't think he had seen that yet. He was, what I heard him say was, yeah, you say you're thinking about a new building, but yeah, I'll believe it when I see it, is kind of what I heard from him.
The question I directly asked him was, if we bought these new cubicles and we bought this new building, could we use those somewhere else? And he said definitively yes.
Yeah, and I just, I didn't, he didn't tell me the details of it, so I'm, I don't, he could explain that to me, then I might agree with him, but I don't know.
I guess for me, it just seems a little, a little far-fetched that we're going to buy the building, and so I would rather just get them the, especially since the cubicle seemed to be the thing that they need the most, I'd just get it for them. I, I don't know, maybe somebody knows something I don't, but I just don't know how we afford the, the building that we're talking about.
No, it's $75,000.
For everything.
And at the Primera Building, they don't have stand-up desks? I thought they did have stand-up desks.
I don't think they're the same stand-up desks as these ones.
What's, what's the cost just of the cubicles, though? That's what I'm...
Do you know what the cost of the cubicles as opposed to the desks?
Oh goodness.
I don't have that with me, I will get that, though.
Okay. Yeah, I just, my only thing is if we can use the money for something else the police want, and not just commit so, that's it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I hear the, I hear the arguments, I know that we're, you know, considering the ergonomic ones for the physical health benefits, and I think one of the things, topics that's been brought to light in the last five years in a, in a real way that we haven't seen before is the, the idea of, you know, mental health as well. And I think that when we're providing the, you know, the police with the tools that they're asking for, especially when it's literally trash that we would be replacing, held together by zip ties, I think that would go a significant way in providing a boost to morale, which is, is going to be good for their health as well. And so if we are concerned about health, I think there's more than just physical health to, to consider, and I think, you know, if these are the tools they're asking for, I mean, why not?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I agree, and the reason I suggested the desk is that he said we need unlimited amount of those, so I totally want to. I just would rather spend the money on something that they would really use as opposed to just abandon in three months, so that's my only question.
And I do have an answer, $50,000 for the cubicles.
It's such a small amount.
That's why we vote, that's fine, I, I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because again, I thought it would help the police more, but...
I, I agree, I think it's about being fiscally responsible, and not purchasing something that you would duplicate in a couple months.
But, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, chief. I, I guess I'm just challenged if it was that significantly bad, that, why we hadn't heard about it before. Because I, for $50,000, it could have come with, at, at any time, so that they have been working in these conditions, it's kind of sad, but still...
We've known that a long time, I mean, the conditions over there have been...
Yeah.
Not great for a long time.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I haven't heard about the cubicles, per se, but certainly the black mold has been a big point of conversation, and, and that's one of my, frankly, one of my concerns about the proposed 16 million for the Primera Building, is that it's not going to be accommodating all of SPD, which means they'll remain under the black mold, and that won't be a solution. So that's a concern I have. But in terms of being fiscally responsible, I'd also ask the question, I mean, 16 million for a building, can we afford that right now? I think that's a question mark.
Well, we're just talking about office furniture.
Well, I'm glad that's not in front of me tonight, but go ahead.
Well, yeah, it seems like it's just an issue that maybe we should pause and talk about more, instead of approving that, that issue tonight.
So it's a good, good discussion, so the motion is to substitute, to make that change, that, that $50,000 for cubicles would go for stand-up desks and ergonomic chairs, or leave it as. So a vote for would substitute with that condition, and a vote against would leave it the way it is. So, all those in favor, and why don't you say and raise your hand? If you're in favor of the substitution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, then that will not be substituted. Second one is more a significant substitution, and it would add $120,000 for working with at-risk youth to prevent drug abuse, and essentially, it would then, it would match the money that we're paying to, for buys of drugs and confidential informants, so we had, would have a two-track. My understanding last time we heard was that there was hundreds of thousands of dollars in the state forfeiture funds that's available for this. So I substituted that language. Chief Mydl emailed me this morning and said he was not in favor of it, so I then changed the language again to make it clear that it would only go forward once he approved it, but that the extra $40,000 for controlled drug buys would wait until he was ready to do the other. So that's with the substituted language that I circulated a little before noon to most of you.
Could we hear from Chief Mydl on that?
Thank you very much, yeah, so the, the first I heard about the $120,000 for, to support prevention of drug use and drug crimes, and pure support and leadership from individuals who have successfully exited the criminal justice involvement was yesterday afternoon. So $120,000 is a lot for us. I know that the city of Spokane has a billion-dollar budget, but when you're looking at that amount of money, that, that's a significant amount for us for the seizure money. As you know, because we have a proposal before you today, we use that seizure money, we try to use that seizure, seizure money for vehicles, desks, software, equipment, on top of CI funds and drug purchases. With 105,000 deaths in one year that ended in September, according to the CDC, we know that our overdose deaths are, are through the roof. In Spokane County alone, in the last eight years, our overdose deaths have more than tripled, that's just in Spokane County. That's just in Spokane County. We know that fentanyl is absolutely tearing through our community. Meth is still up there. Meth is kind of ignored, but meth is also, continues to be a big issue in Spokane County. So when you're looking at the amount that was requested just over 24 hours ago, and then on top of it, a concern for me is that the ordinance would require the proposal be administered by the Office of Civil Rights. So when it comes to seizure money, the agency that seizes the money is responsible for how that money is spent and we get audited by, by the different, by the state and the federal government for how that's spent. So a couple of concerns as well, in addition to the sheer quantity of that money, which again, for us, is a significant amount. I'm, first of all, not sure that we could just hand it over to another entity. And if we did, we would be exposing ourselves to potential and audit finding based on how they spend that money. And then lastly, I would say is, is we are supportive of prevention programs, absolutely. Through YPI and PAL, I think we've shown our commitment over eight years. We want to try to help divert a lot of these youth before they go down that road. But just throwing 120,000 at another organization, the, the Office of Civil Rights, that has not been identified yet and we don't know where that money's going or what program it's going to, I want to make sure that we're going to do it based on best practices and evidence-based programs as well, that we're not just throwing money at it so that we feel good, but we're actually doing it on a program that has been proven to be successful. So those are my concerns with that. And meanwhile, we asked for 120,000 in this line item for the 2022 budget. That was reduced to 80,000. So what we're really asking for is, is the 40,000 from the same seizure fund that we asked for going into 2022 because we knew we were going to spend that, that much money and we are purchasing a lot of fentanyl out there, as Lieutenant Booth has said in a number of different meetings. So again, not opposed to having further discussion about it, concerned somewhat of the legality of going through a, a different entity, not SPD. What does that mean for an audit? And then 120,000 is a lot as well. So I would definitely welcome further conversations on that. But meanwhile, we still have this need over here for the other funding so we can continue our operations. And again, I should point out, our operations now, because of the, the law change last year, we're going after the dealers. So this, this isn't the person on the street that's possessing it. What we're trying to do is go after the dealers, which are a hub for the entire county, if not the state as well. So that's what this money helps us get off the streets is the dealers.
So Major McNabb and I have been discussing the doing this RFP for this for a while. Since we already have 80,000 approved for this year and this 40,000 was just for the last, if we deferred this for a month to have more conversation, to get that figured out a little tighter, is there, I don't see any problem because you've got plenty of money to get through the next quarter and a half.
If we had to delay this, yes, we would still be able to continue operations.
But the question was, would you be willing to have a discussion, further discussion about this? More details about how a, a youth program would look, how we can actually get that going and, and make it work?
Absolutely.
From your point of view, from police point of view?
Absolutely, 100%. Again, I would also ask, we have legal there as well, just to make sure we're not going to get crosswise within the audit.
Okay, good, thanks.
Is there a motion?
Councilmember Cathcart has a comment.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I would just say if we're going to have a conversation on this, then one of the things I would like us to, to include in that conversation is, you know, perhaps what the program might look like. And I am a big fan of DARE. I went through DARE as a kid and I think DARE, you know, I, I continue to have a very healthy fear of illicit narcotics as a result of DARE, I would say. And, and I think others benefit quite a bit from that program. And I would like to see SPD be the one that leads it, not an unaccountable nonprofit. I want to know that there's accountability and I trust our officers and I think they could do a really good job. And one of the biggest things we're lacking right now are positive interactions between officers and our school kids. And I, you know, I recognize there's some obstacles, but I think it's worth a discussion about having a program like this stood up so that our kids can be starting to divert away from the, the direction some of them are going.
My understanding is that we can't use these funds to pay officers overtime forfeiture funds.
You can't use it for salary. When it comes to overtime, I don't know that that's accurate, but for salary, you definitely cannot.
Yeah, I don't think you can use, but, so is there a motion to defer this?
Let me get my comment in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I can echo, so I can echo Councilmember Cathcart, you know, we sometimes we're like this. So I remember we had this discussion last time, we had forfeitures come before us. Councilmember Cathcart talked about DARE. We said we had not heard of any other youth programs that was being investigated, explored, that was going to, other than the two programs you mentioned, YPI and PALs, that was going to go out into the neighborhoods and do any collaboration with any other groups. I don't, it could stay in the police department. I, I don't have any issues with that, but I don't hear, I don't hear those conversations or any movement and we talk about our kids and what's going on, you know, and it goes on and on and on. But when will the police really be proactive in making those relationships and helping other nonprofits to partner with you to develop that? That's what I'm looking for. Or if you even did an outreach to, hey, what's out there that we can work with you on?
We do, that's a good question. So we do, our PAL during the summer months, we, we will partner with, we have had District 81 in the past, we have the MLK Center, the Native Project has been involved in that. We've had the library out there as well. So, and when you're looking at prior years, our Police Activities League, which is three different parks spread throughout the city, so they're, they're close to everyone's neighborhood as close as we can get. We had over 700 youth at last year's event and I believe the year before. That just keeps growing. The Youth and Police Initiative, we would rotate to different high schools every month and take 12 to 15 different students that were chosen by either the principal or the counselor to participate after class for a week, to build bridges, talk about each other's experiences. And so we were on a constant rotation basis to each of the high schools. Then COVID hit and then obviously the schools were shut down for a while. So we're very anxious to get back into the schools and the YPI program has been very successful. The, the evaluations before and after have been very positive. So in addition to the YPI and the PAL, we're engaged with Excelsior, with Crosswalk, the Salish School. So we're out there. If, if there's anything we need to improve on, it is to show how much we are out there because our officers and community outreach team are doing just an amazing job.
And Chief Mydl, I hear that and I, the counselors and the entities you work with, but it sounds like many of those are really troubled kids who are kind of on, on the fence, but it doesn't give the opportunity for a middle-class family, so those kids can interact with other kids who may not be facing all those challenges. So there is no, I'm going to call it cross-pollination for lack of a better term. How do we integrate them so they can see something different, the children who are disadvantaged and the ones who are advantaged can see how advantaged they are? So if we're just keeping these same kids who have troubles together all the time, then how do we move them forward to thinking about other opportunities and possibilities? That's just my question of, of how do we start looking at that piece and mingling?
Yeah, that's a great question, you know, and COVID was, it was interesting because we were in essence shut down for almost two years and I think relationships suffered across the board, not just law enforcement, but, you know, all these different organizations. And we've just recently reopened up again, so we're, we're getting our other programs up and running again. And I would echo what you're saying. We look forward to that and all great things have small beginnings. And the YPI and PAL are a good start. We're connected with a, just a myriad of different groups and a lot of the groups, though, are not necessarily troubled. At the Native Project, their summer program, Salish School invited into the schools, Excelsior. But yeah, we're, we're always looking to expand, always looking for new ideas as well. So I, I am in agreement with you.
Thank you.
All right. Now can I get a motion to defer this to June 6th and then we'll have time to come up with some of the details and make sure it meets legal?
So moved to defer to June 6th.
Okay, second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. I think it was all the requests.
Can I ask questions about the hostage negotiations vehicle now?
You can.
With the chief and Johnny here? A few questions, I sent it to you shortly, a few minutes, or a couple hours ago, including Major McNabb. But I was gone at briefing last week, so I apologize. I was at a previous engagement for Spokane Scholars and I had asked Major McNabb to give comparison cities at committee meeting for that. So I followed up on Wednesday with a question about the comparable cities that are using the hostage negotiations vehicle. I got that response late Friday and so was able to look over it today and had more questions that came from that. And so I emailed those to you and to Major McNabb and Johnny. So I guess if you could answer some of those, if you were able to.
And I have some of the responses that he sent to you and I will do my best to answer the others. Also, I'd point out Lieutenant Waters is going to be here at 6:00 this evening too to answer questions as well.
Well, the follow-up question, so I saw the comparable cities and questions. So I guess the first question I'm confused about is the number of calls that are being responded to. There were like 50 calls this year, or 33 calls in 2020 so far. We've seen an increase, but only about 30 to 40% of those calls require a vehicle? Is that correct?
So there's, there's nuances to that. One of the issues is, in the emails pointed out, that if we had a, if we had a vehicle that fit the need, so this was really, this was a recreational vehicle that was converted to use for a command post, basically for the, the hostage negotiation team. And you've all heard about the mice issues, the water damage, the layout of it. You've heard that some of the issues they're having is that you'll have nine or 10 people in this RV recreational vehicle, most of them designed to be open, just so that when you're there camping, you have that open feeling. And it takes a teamwork. So while you have one negotiator on the phone, you'll have several other people gathering information, talking to family members, trying to find out, okay, what's the underlying issue that you can help us so when we're talking to John Doe, we can really start to, to work through what his issues are? While in the process of doing that, the challenges they're having as well is because it's such an open area, this, the negotiator is, is talking with this individual and hearing these conversations in the back. And they're hearing, you know, an officer may be talking about something not related specifically to that negotiations, but it's very distracting for the negotiator, but it's also can set us back in the conversations if they're hearing this conversation because now this person who is in a highly aroused state is hearing people behind him, you know, either talking or laughing or talking about something that they don't know. And a lot of these folks are very paranoid. So it's not just, it's not just the, the RV, but it's also the layout of it. So last week, they couldn't get the key in the lock, as an example, so they had to crawl through the window of the RV. This thing is well over 20 years old. It's been out in the elements. So to answer your question, one of the things that they have said is that there are times where if we had a functioning RV that, or a functioning vehicle, which is what they're asking for, we would use that on a lot more of the callouts. But they have to determine, is it worth driving it here and going through everything they're going through? And this, the one they found in Fleet, again, I would add Fleet weighed in on this and actually said this is the best vehicle for your need at the best price. They agreed that this is the vehicle they should have.
Well, so Major McNabb says that we have not kept record use of when the vehicle responded. So it seems like their estimates, I guess, so like 2017, there were 17 times it was called, in theory, 40%, so about half was called seven or eight times in a year? I'm just trying to understand it correctly.
No, no, that's, it's a good question. Yeah, it's a good question. Here's what Lieutenant Waters said and he'll be here tonight at 6 o'clock. Using the vehicle is a call-to-call decision. Every call is different. Honestly, if we knew the motorhome would start, wasn't infested with mice and would function better, we would use it on almost all calls. The lock was malfunctioning last week. We had to climb through the window. We finally got the lock replaced. And he says it is these reasons why it is sometimes problematic to even attempt to bring this thing out to the scene. So those numbers you have, that you got are accurate, but what the lieutenant who oversees the team is also saying is that this thing needs a lot of love and sometimes it's just not worth us bringing it out there. But if, if it actually was functioning like it was designed to and what it should function as, they would use it on almost all their calls. And that's from the lieutenant.
Well, and part of my question is like, we've seen this big increase in the last two years. So I was confused of what that increase was, if it was due to the 2021 use of force changes? We've had changes in '22 about use of force, so.
Yeah, a combination of, a combination of both. So Initiative 940, if you recall, was passed in 2020. You know, that really started us down the road of more de-escalation, more tools, calling for more officers to come to the scene. That was, if anything, reinforced last year where call for more, one of the things specifically spelled out in the ordinance was calling for more crisis, they call them crisis intervention teams. Well, all of our officers have crisis intervention team training, but what we took that as is a step further, we're going to call our hostages negotiators, these people are the experts on negotiating, especially with someone in crisis. So what you've, what you've seen is, is we're now calling that out a lot more, but it's also exacerbated because we all know with COVID, mental health has gone absolutely skyrocketed. So the calls that were going on related to those in crisis has, has absolutely skyrocketed as well. So it's a combination of, of the law change and it's a combination of just where we are right now as a society and those that are having mental health crisis that, and you all see it and you hear the stories of, of people on the bridge, you see it when you're walking down the street or you're driving down the street. We just have a lot more mental health calls than we ever have.
So this would be in response to someone wanting to jump off the bridge, that vehicle?
It could, it could be. It, it could be. If we're going to lock down the bridge and, thank God, we haven't had to do this for a while, but we, we had to lock down Monroe Street Bridge once for 22 hours, trying to talk someone off of the bridge. So it's feasible, it could be typically not. Typically, our, our staff are really good at talking those folks off the rail, but if it's going to be for more than an hour or two, you're going to be seeing our command post deploy, you'll see the hostage vehicle deploy, especially in the elements and especially based on how long do we anticipate being there? A lot of these calls now are taken four or five hours and that ties up a lot of resources.
Yeah, I've just, I've had a few people ask me, and I wasn't quite sure how to explain it, how the RV got into the state of disrepair that it's in? And, and some of these folks who had kind of asked that were also looking for some reassurance that this, you know, the new vehicle would be well-maintained and, and we wouldn't have similar issues down the road, so.
Yeah, that, that was also addressed in the email as well. So originally, we, we were able to pay a RV storage area to store it. It was outside, but my understanding is it had a covered canopy. And then because of the costs associated with that, we then stored it at the, and I want to get this right here. So they used to keep it out in Liberty Lake at a private mini storage facility. It was stored in a carport and it was not secure, but they could keep it plugged in with all the equipment on there. There's things that we need to keep plugged in. They were then able to move it to the Normandy Garage Site once the city completely relocated to that area. That was ideal. And then since that was sold at the Normandy location, which Centone Normandy, they've had it, we've had it stored out at the Academy. So that's where it's been stored. So again, the, the comment here is we've tried to find a better location to store it, but it's either we have to purchase or we have to rent somewhere to store it as well. So that's something we'll have to look at. There just hasn't been any city property that fits the needs of storing the RV. So we would want to find somewhere, somewhere better to store it.
What about just like the maintenance, like how the mice got into it, like just that kind of stuff? I mean, what, just kind of, what has allowed it to kind of get to that state?
I think one is the age, because there's also water damage. And, and one is the age of the, the vehicle itself. Again, it's well over 20 years old. And then I think storing it out at the Academy, right next to the field, there's field mice that would wander through the area and they just crawl up the wheel wells and then, and crawl into the, the actual cabin area as well. So that's really been the issue, is nowhere to store it, costs money if we store it somewhere, and that was the next best place.
So we have a Nelson Center and there may be an opportunity for them to give you a little space or a big space.
That, that is a good question and I'm excited to see what Lieutenant Waters says at 6 o'clock tonight. That would make sense out there. That would make sense out there. I agree.
But I guess the question, which I think is a really good question, is how are we gonna make sure that this vehicle doesn't go the way of the current one? Because it doesn't sound like we have a storage figured out, unless Lieutenant Waters has an answer for it.
Yeah, we'll either have to go back to finding private storage or the facility right now, out at where the Fleet is right now. It has to be one of those two places. Because I agree, I don't think any of our negotiators want to see it go right back to where it was and have the exact same problems again.
We'll look for a budget item.
I still have more questions, too, which is, has, we've been in talks with the valley and the county, because one of the comparables that Major McNabb sent, with Snohomish County, partners with six different jurisdictions to use a vehicle. Do the county and the valley use it? I mean, we're only not even half of the population of the county, so presumably, we're not half of the calls that would require it.
Probably, actually, we probably are, when you look at our call load and the density of the city. We share, we still do, we share a Bearcat with them that we received through a grant. I'm trying to find a way to say this delicately. When it is our equipment and it's solely ours, it is very well taken care of. When you're sharing equipment, a couple of things happen. Either it's shared equipment and humans being who they are, including, you know, including police officers. If it's a shared piece of equipment, it may not be taken care of as well as we would like when it's your own. The other part would be, there's times where we've gone to use the Bearcat before we got the second one, and it wasn't there. So in this scenario, I think the challenge is, as Major McNabb pointed out, is when we need it, we need it. And when you look at the BHU statistics, which I can forward to the council as well, the Behavioral Health Unit Statistics for code deployed, you'll see that Spokane City is overwhelmingly the majority of those calls, and those are really those who are in mental health. So we're significantly more mental health calls through our code-deployed teams, even when you combine the county with the valley. And it's one of those things, when you need it, you want to have it, you want to know it's there. And I would just throw, I mean, second-largest city in the state of Washington, and with the amount of mental health that we, mental health calls we go on now, which is not going to diminish anytime soon, is the second-largest city. This is an important piece for our negotiators, who go out frequently, and they go out a lot. And I believe it was also in the budget for this year, it was already approved in the 22, 2022 budget is what I was told as well. So now we're just asking...
I guess it's gonna be used a lot for people in crisis who are suicidal, then?
Suicidal hostage or barricaded subjects. It's not just mental health.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the escalation is due to mental health crises. And is that what, how most people respond, is with a big vehicle, if someone is in a mental health crisis, suicidal?
Yes.
That's a real question.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. So there's some overlap. So you will have someone who is, has committed specifically, I would say, a violent felony, and they have barricaded themselves in their house, they barricaded themselves somewhere in there by themselves, but they've committed a violent felony. We can't just leave. If it's a property crime, more often than not, we may end up not staying, because we don't want to force a confrontation over a property crime. But when it becomes a violent crime, the person is in a mental health crisis, and they are now, they are now in their house refusing to come out. You'll have a combination of the increase in violent crimes coupled with a mental health crisis. So there is some overlap in what we're seeing with a lot of these folks.
Right, and then just to the point, so we have not talked to the county or the valley or anybody about potential partnerships, but we used to store it in Liberty Lake, where we took better care of it there.
Correct, because it was our vehicle, and we had control over it.
But it was still our vehicle, and then it got damaged from the way we store it.
Correct.
Counsel, members, opponent, two things I'd like to add. Thank you, chief. One is, since December, the price has gone up over $60,000, and I don't see it going anywhere but north. That's one. Second, as it relates to that price, the vendor has guaranteed us the current price till this Friday, in terms of where it may or may not go. And then lastly, I will commit to you as the city administrator, if the council is gonna consider and ultimately give us the approval to purchase this vehicle, we are sure as heck gonna take care of it, as an asset to our portfolio that needs to be taken care of and addressed, so these issues with infestation, anything else, doesn't occur. We have a facility here in the city that we can store it, house it, and do all the things we need to do to maintain it for years to come.
And one of the things I think we'll notice on the care of the vehicle is, once a vehicle becomes borderline unusable, and it sits for a lot longer not being used, then, you know, the eyes on the vehicle begins to change. And so as we noticed that it wasn't, you know, adequate for our officers to use, or, you know, once it got water damage and needed to be repaired, or the locks weren't working or whatever, and it became more frustration than it was worth, what ends up happening is eventually, care of a vehicle can go down because, you know, and then it's just sitting because, you know, it's harder to use. With a vehicle like this, and with the amount of usage, I think that's been suggested from the police and their responses, I think with the amount of use that it's going to get, I believe that it's gonna be significantly more, more well-maintained, because it's gonna be something that's in use much more often, because it suits the needs better.
And I just had a question about funding, if it could, we could use forfeiture funding for it, too. Was that an option? Because I'm still confused, it's coming out of capital funds that could be used for patrol vehicles, is that right?
Yeah. Typically, and I actually have the presentation Matt Folsom gave to the council, this was a few months ago. That's something I would, I would certainly, we could look into.
Because that, that funds could be used for patrol vehicles that you all said were incredibly important immediately right now.
It would. Again, though, those forfeiture funds, as I've explained, they're, we spend them on all these other things that we, well, that we want to spend them on, that we need to spend them on, from other vehicles, the desks, the software, equipment, CI funds. And if you're gonna take half a million out of forfeiture funds, you're gonna almost wipe out our forfeiture funds, which is one of the reasons why, and again, I should add, this is something that the team has wanted for years because of the condition of the RV. But because of the way the economy was going, we didn't put it in our request. But we got to the point now where it was in such disrepair that we knew we needed to add it to, to the request for this year. And I think they, we made that argument of, this is something that should come out of,